The order, this is a regular board meeting, March sixth, two thousand and seven. Administration building. Uh, let's rise from moment of silence followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Moving on to item four, roll call. Everyone is present. Item five, recommended approving the agenda for the regular board meeting of March sixth, two thousand and seven. Any corrections? Any corrections, uh, on these minutes? Any from the board? If not, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, the agen- the agenda. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scovelo, members of the board. There are a few, uh, corrections. Uh, under closed meeting, uh, items six and item eight are to be deleted. That's under the grievances. Item six and eight are to be pulled from tonight's meeting. Also, under consent agenda, item thirteen A, page ninety-two A will be added to backup. For the backup, and that's the actual calendar. Uh, also, under section D, item number twenty-four, pages one thirty-three will be replaced with page one thirty-three A. Changes are highlighted, and I think, uh, that was provided for you also. And, um, item E, recommend approval of following bits and proposals. Item twenty-six has, uh, we've added, uh, pages one forty-one A and one forty-one B as additional backup.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve? A motion by Mr. Aguilar, seconded by, by Mrs. Levana, favor raise your right hand? Motion, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item six, recommend approving the minutes for the regular board meeting of February sixth, two thousand and seven. Any corrections? Any corrections on the minutes? If not, I have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Lehman, all favor raise your right hand? I'll oppose. Any, and well, okay. Motion passes with Mrs. Levana abstaining, and anyone else in favor? Moving on to item seven, superintendent's report, a conference presentation, one. Scenarios USA, Lopez High School students recognition, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scovelo. Uh, this is a, a student that has done an excellent job at Lopez High School, and we're real proud of her, and we wanted to bring her to the board to get her recognized. And to introduce this item, I'll have Ms. Monfils, er, superintendent for the Lopez cluster, do this. Ms. Monfils?
Dr. Scovelo, m- Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. You probably read a little bit about Scenarios USA in today's newspaper. It's, uh, con- Scenarios U- USA conducts an annual contest called What's the Real Deal? And the winner of that contest, uh, has his or her story told and made into a film. Caroline Boone is our Lopez High School, uh, student who is currently in process of production, filming, and of als- of also, of course, starring in her film. Scenarios USA is a national nonprofit organization, gives teens the opportunity to speak out on issues that shape their lives, such as HIV, pregnancy, peer pressure, self-esteem, relationships, good choices. Their mission as a nonprofit organization is to help young people make healthier and safer decisions about their life by sharing their ideas, their thoughts, their imagination, and their knowledge with their peers. Uh, Scenarios USA has been, as I mentioned in Brownsville, these past several days, working with Caroline and her colleagues in the production of her film. Her film will be one of sixteen available for youth in classrooms, both, um, elementary, middle school, especially secondary, and even college classrooms across the United States. Ms. Dawn Hall will continue this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Monfils and board members. I just wanted to tell you that it is always exciting when you're at a, a fine arts magnet to see a rising young star use her creativity and have it recognized nationally. Such is the case with our student Caroline Boone. Please stand Caroline. She is here with her mother, Naomi Boone Mendoza. I would like you to welcome her also. She is also represented by Jackie Zapata, who is helping do the filming, and she will come up and actually make the, oops, the presentation to Caroline. I did want to recognize and thank Pete Goodman and Miguel Saldana, who are part of the Brownsville Film Commission, who helped to make this possible at our campus. The kids are involved, we've had mentors, we've had, uh, peers who are actually acting in the film. They let them go in front of the camera and behind the camera. It's been a wonderful, wonderful experience for the kids and for Caroline. If you want to come on u- come on up and continue, thank you.
Hi again, my name is Jackie Zapata. I'd like to first of all, I'll thank, um, the city of Brownsville, and especially the school district for letting us, um, into your school, into Lopez High School for Caroline Boone. Uh, me and myself and I, short movie. Um, I know we've been filming for the past two days, and the experience that these kids have had and have gone through has been unbelievable. I know we actually wrapped, and we finished shooting yesterday. Um, and I know we had a little bit over fifty, um, students from Lopez High School in particular, and a couple of other volunteers from around from Brownsville. And all of them were at tears, and they did not want the experience to be over. Um, and I know for Caroline Boone in particular, um, the experience for her and watching her grow just from the beginning of all this to now is just, is just really, really amazing. Um, I know personally, myself, I'm here, I participated with Sunni- with Scenarios eight years ago, in the very first, um, film that they shot here in the valley. Now I was very fortunate to be an actress in it. And now, eight years later, I'm still involved with Scenarios, and here I am presenting, uh, Ms. Caroline Boone to you guys. So I think it'll be very interesting to see what she has in store for herself, and also for the city of Brownsville here in the future. And on behalf of Scenarios USA, I would like to recognize Ms. Caroline Boone for submitting her story, which was selected as the winner of the two thousand and six What's the Real Deal Story and Script Writing Contest for the real Grandy Valley. I'd like to thank, uh, Jackie for presenting this to me, and I'd like to thank you all for recognizing me here today. And, um, I like to really endorse Scenarios. I really am very, um, I, it means so much to me what they have done. To me, not, not just now, I was an intern on the last film they shot in the valley, um, when my freshman year. And they've stayed in contact with me, and they've supported me, and they've been really just fabulous for the last four years, and super supportive. And, um, I thank you all for bringing it into the classroom, so I could get in, in touch with them and see the films myself. And I hope you're pleased to do that, thank you. Thank you again.
We'd like to shake your hand. Thank you, Ms. Monfils, Ms. Hall, and, uh, Ms. Caroline Boone, congratulations on your accomplishment, and, uh, you make us proud. Moving on to item two, two thousand and seven Heritage Plan, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scovelo, members of the board. Each year, we're, we're, we're faced with a, with the same, uh, decision about, uh, um, helping out in the historical area of town. And, uh, to introduce this presentation, I call on Mr. Sanchez to give you a little brief background and, and let the presenters present.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, board members. Um, you have it in your, in your packet, in, actually in your agenda item, uh, the, the background on the individual homes and, and things that we do. Uh, at this time, I, I asked Mr. Jose Gabito, uh, to be brief, a five-minute presentation. Uh, and he said he would make it even shorter than that. Mr. Gabito?
Uh, good evening, uh, Dr. Scovelo, superintendent, board members. My name is Joe Gabito, I'm the heritage officer for the city of Brownsville. For the plas- for the past twenty years, uh, five taxing entities have participated in the historic tax exemption plan. And, um, I'm glad that you have participated along with the university, the port, the city of Brownsville, Cameron County, and the university. Uh, the changes from last year are minimal. Uh, two, uh, historic sites were added, and two were reduced back to fifty percent. So I would, uh, uh, venture to say, or assume, that next year's, uh, uh, would be very similar in, as far as the dollar amount that the, um, taxes are foregone. Uh, I'd like to also say that, uh, uh, recognize you for the fine work that you did in restoring the high school. Uh, that restoration, that historic s- restoration, uh, uh, including the one with the, uh, Cameron County nineteen twelve courthouse, are wonderful examples of institutions believing in historic preservation. I, I have two presenters with me, uh, Doc- Dr. Tony Knopf of the university, and, uh, Tony Martinez, and so I'd like for them to say a few words.
Have you seen the Balak Building downtown? Uh, it's just amazing, but you need to get down and see it on Elizabeth Street. It's part of the infrastructure, wha- I would put it that way, for historic preservation in Brownsville. The, the main items we see are, are public buildings that are already off your tax rolls. I mean, you can't get any money out of them anyway. But it's the infrastructure that supports the historic restoration that goes on among the public buildings. We gotta have the private ones if we want to have the public ones, uh, succeed. And you go down on Elizabeth Street, take a look up, and, uh, almost the entire front of the Balak, uh, old, um, Department Store, almost entirely finished now, it's magnificent. And that's the kind of thing we, we want to keep going.
My name is Tony Martinez, and we were fortunate enough, uh, to restore the old Cameron County Jail, which is also out of nineteen twelve. And myself, along with a couple of other, uh, of the attorneys that are living in that jail right now, uh, we would sincerely request, uh, that this exemption continue. Uh, we'd like to continue and further our efforts in other historic areas. And, uh, we certainly appreciate your cooperation with us. And, um, hopefully, uh, we can continue this wonderful project, and, um, for these young kids, so they can see historically what Brownsville used to look like. Thank you.
I, I'd like to conclude with some, um, some figures. Uh, the, uh, just to give you an example, the, the restoration of the old nineteen twelve jail that's on Twelfth and Van Buren, the properties around it, uh, there's an annex behind it that in two thousand and five paid, uh, sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, in two thousand and six, th- they're paying nineteen hundred dollars to the BISD for taxes. Um, next, across the street, there's a, a brand new, new office that w- uh, in, um, wa- was, uh, valued at seventy-eight thousand. The, the old jails in, uh, across the street need an, 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 an annex, and so it's worth thirty, uh, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars now, and it's paying four, uh, four thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents in taxes, and they're not exempt. So there's that domino effect that happens with those buildings around buildings that are being preserved. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabito, Dr. Knopf, and Mr. Martinez. I, I believe in what you've said, and hopefully the, I can, uh, the rest of my colleagues will do so also. Moving on to item three, presentation of, of, on report, from the BISD Bond Oversight Committee, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scovelo, members of the board. Uh, you know, we have set up a bond oversight committee, and, and, uh, we work with them very closely, and, uh, we did say that the, at the very, if you'll see this, at the first board meeting every month, they will have an agenda item just like this, to give a report to the board that, uh, that what they've been doing. And, uh, thi- this time I call on Mr. Rodriguez, who's the chairperson for the bond oversight committee, to do his presentation. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Scovelo, members of the board. I come before you today to discuss the first item that we have been asked to look at as your bond oversight committee. Uh, back in early January, the bond oversight committee was formed primarily, uh, in part, and, uh, the committee's goal is to provide advice and recommendations to the administration and Board of Trustees on all expenditure of bond funds that were approved by the voters on May thirteenth, in the May thirteenth, two thousand and six bond election. With respect to that task that you have asked us to perform, uh, the first of, in a series, I'm sure, of recommendations that we will be making to you, deal with the recommendation, uh, to let the RFQ for the architectural firm. Uh, the first step that we took in that endeavor was to meet with other members of the facilities commission. And I think all of the members of the school board were actually there during that meeting. Uh, there was a presentation by the top five architectural firms that were selected by the administration out of, I believe, eleven. Uh, our committee met at a break during that meeting and voted using the, uh, the numerical scoring sheet that was provided to us by the administration. At that point in time, after the presentations by the fu- top five, we ranked Gomez Mendez Science first, uh, PBK second, and Janak third. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, we were asked to go, as many of us to go as we could, to, uh, visit the campuses of the top three schools. Uh, five of us were able to visit all five ca- all, all three campuses. We visited Lopez High School, we visited the, uh, high school at San Diego, and we visited the high school at Judson Wagner. Following, uh, the site visits, we returned and had a meeting last Thursday, a regular call meeting of the bond oversight committee, and proceeded to do a number of things. One of the things that we have been wrestling with as a committee is how, in fact, are we supposed to, uh, dispatch our duties or do our job for you all as the Board of Trustees and the administration? We had a lot of thoughtful deliberation about the schools that we visited, and about the manner in which we were going to try to make recommendations to you. Uh, everyone that was present at the board meeting, uh, last Thursday spoke, uh, at one time or another on issues that they felt were important. It was a very, very good meeting, uh, there were a lot of issues that were discussed. Uh, people had differing opinions, and everyone had an opportunity to be heard, and all opinions were voiced. The first issue that came to a vote was a discussion, or excuse me, was, was a decision about making one recommendation to you all and to the administration, or making a recommendation that the top three were acceptable. Uh, we had a lot of deliberation on that issue, and, uh, there was a motion made that we make a recommendation of only one architectural firm to you. That motion was put to a vote, and that vote, that motion carried by a vote of seven to five. Following that vote, the next question that was called, uh, was a motion that was made to recommend Gomez Mendez Science as the architectural firm that should get the RFQ. That motion was deliberated, it was discussed, and that motion passed by a vote of nine to one with two abstentions. So with respect to my first recommendation today, on behalf of the bond oversight committee, the bond oversight committee recommends to the administration and to the Board of Trustees that you award the RFQ for architectural services to Gomez Mendez Science. We came to our decision based upon a number of factors, some of which I'm about to tell you about. First of all, the accessibility of the partners of the firm to the district, and their prior work with the district on other buildings. The functionality of the schools that Gomez Mendez Science has designed and helped you to build in the past. The ability to bring projects in at or under budget. That was considered and debated by our committee very heavily. And, and finally, the overall quality of the work that Gomez Mendez Science has provided to this district in the past. That's the first recommendation, and at this po- I have another recommendation on a completely separate item. If you all would like to ask questions, uh, of me with respect to, uh, the recommendation I just made, I'll be happy to entertain those, or I can continue with the second recommendation on an unrelated item. Okay. Uh, the second recommendation was, we took a vote on presenting to the administration, for presentation to you all, a conflict of interest form that we would ask the employees of the district to sign. All the members of the bond oversight committee signed a conflict of interest form. Uh, we understand that we cannot in any way, uh, make anyone acquiesce in the signing this, but we are making a recommendation to you all, uh, to present this, should you see fit, uh, to members of the district. And I'll, I believe that, uh, Ms. Pettis has a copy of it, but I have an extra copy that I can present to you at this time, and I'll, I'll do so afterwards. And the last thing that I would like to say is that, on a personal note, and I think I can also speak for the members of the committee, uh, I want to personally thank, uh, Ms. Patty Pettis and Ms. Lucy Longoria for having to not only do the jobs that I'm sure they do very capably for you all, but they have to deal with us on the committee as well, and they have to take their time out of their day, uh, on, on, on matters that, that I think are secondary to the, to the task that they have at hand. And I just wanted to publicly thank them for, uh, helping with the ease, uh, and efficiency with which we're able to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Gonzalez. Any comments from board? Mr. Aguilar?
That second recommendation of conflict of interest, uh, thank you. That second recommendation of conflict of interest, is, is that the same kind of form we signed about three years ago? That board members signed here, that, uh, it was similar to, uh, what they're recommending, uh?
If I may. Thank you, uh, yes, conflict of interest form, we have it in place. As a matter of fact, it's an obligation that if anybody, not only on this project, but if, if we have a conflict of interest in any dealings with anybody that does business with it, that we have a conflict, we must disclose that as employees, that we have a conflict of interest.
However, sir, the letter that I'm referring to was a very specific letter, uh, addressed to the board. I don't reme- you guys, I don't think you were here, or, uh, Mr. Cortez, but we, he signed one, uh, a letter of interest, no conflict, that no vendor should contact us, whatever it is.
Well, I, I, I know that I, I get one in the mail from the external auditor.
No, 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 it was a special letter.
It's a conflict of in- of interest.
Uh, if I may, for heads administration can dig out that letter, because I know I signed one, besides the one you're talking about. Yeah, we have to sign that one off. But this was a specific letter of conflict of interest that we signed, uh, when I came aboard, everybody signed it.
That, that's for board members? You're talking about the one for board members? Yes, that is required when you, when you first become a board member.
No, 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 there's, there's another one had to be with vendors.
There's one that we sign every year. That we're preventing, yeah. That comes from the internal auditor. From the internal auditor.
Would you look in my folder and file and look for that letter? Mr. Gonzalez, would you look in my folder and look into it?
That's a look for.
Because we might have a similar letter.
I know you do. And we also have one for employees.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you again, Mr. Rodriguez, for that, uh, excellent presentation.
Thank you for the, uh, on behalf of the members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to serve the district.
Contrary, thank you. Moving on to B, standing board agenda items, five board members, Mr. Gonzalez? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Moving on to item four, referendum on election dates. Mr. Lehman, you play this on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Uh, we had discussed, uh, numerous times, uh, through, uh, I guess, uh, the period of two to, two months, uh, there was an item that kept being placed to move the election, uh, back to May from November. And, uh, I would, I think at the last meeting, I, I, I had a, an item, uh, suggesting that, uh, possibly, uh, to, uh, dispel, or, or I guess to, to clarify the issue at hand, uh, in allowing the public, um, and getting the public's opinion once and for all, that this, uh, be done in the form of a referendum. Uh, I later, uh, learned, uh, through the discussions with the, uh, the board attorney that apparently, uh, this is not possible. And I'll let you, uh, at this point, uh, the agenda item that I put on, uh, is to read discussion regarding referendum on election dates, term limits, and/or other methods of determining public opinion on these issues. And I'll let you incur or, or still end, uh?
Mr. Salania?
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, uh, I did do some research into this matter, uh, involving, uh, referendums, and when would they would be allowed or not allowed, uh, discussions with the Secretary of State, and, uh, independent research, as well as consultation with some other, uh, attorneys specialized in the area of, uh, of election law and school board elections specifically. Uh, basically, (cough) excuse me, uh, referendums are only allowed, uh, under certain asp- you know, statutory provisions, uh, or constitutional provisions, or, uh, special calls that may be made by the governor of Texas. Uh, not everything, in other words, is, can be made or subject to a referendum. It basically needs to be authorized by law. The issues that were brought forth in discussion regarding this, whether, uh, the election should be on one general election date or another general election date, and the subsequent i- issue raised regarding three or four-year terms as far as, uh, school board members are concerned, are not authorized by law or the Texas constitution, and so therefore would not be subject to a referendum election.
Mr. Lehman?
So in reference to education code eleven point oh five nine, is that, uh, where we find most of the language, uh, that we're discussing tonight, as far as the, uh, the, uh, possibility of, uh, extending or changing the, not extending, but changing the, the, uh, term of office and changing the, uh, the election date? Uh, it'll be in the section C of the election code, I mean, of the education code, but more specifically under eleven point oh five nine, and I think another one. But, uh, the issue here now is if, if, uh, this board wants to continue, and I'm pretty sure that, uh, some of the board members, uh, would like to see May. So, uh, I'm, um, I guess, um, trying to, uh, say that we, we need to, I guess, discuss this, uh, at length, whether we want to, uh, continue, uh, and, 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 I guess, get a method or a, another method of, of, of getting public opinion other than the referendum, because we cannot do it. So what would you suggest, uh, councilor, that would be within the guidelines of the law?
A- as far as obtaining public opinion, that would be a, you know, a wide variety of, of, of methods that the board would, would, should probably meet in a policy committee meeting, uh, to determine if they'd rather, if they'd like to have public meetings, uh, around the city, uh, in, in the district, uh, if they would have a series of policy commitings here that would be well advertised. Uh, any other method that the board would deem, uh, uh, fit to obtain public opinion on this issue? Uh, basically, under House Bill one, that was passed in the last legislative session, uh, you all have the options of going to May or to November. Uh, and, and that is, that is strictly within the realm and the domain of, uh, of the school board in making that policy determination.
And, uh, eleven oh five nine of the same code gives us the same domain to either go to three or four terms.
Yes, sir. Of course, uh, caveat to all of this is that, uh, you do need, uh, uh, approval, uh, for any changes, uh, that are going to make, that are going to be made in any aspects of the election, uh, by the Department of Justice out of Washington, Detroit.
So at this point, just to, for the time of, uh, for the sake of time, uh, then I, I would, uh, would like to, to follow this up in a policy in its proper, uh, format and forum, and hopefully, uh, get something going so we can discuss it.
Mr. Aguilar?
So actually, what the policy committee is going to decide or determine as to how can we get input from the committee, a community, right, correct?
That's something that we-
Not necessarily make it a policy.
No, 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 I would, you know, we need to-
I want to clarify that.
I, I think all of us need to be in sync, and it'd be nice to have seven votes positive as the, the avenue to take. Apparently, there's dissension in, in, but there's favor. So, uh, in other words, uh, there are constituents that like November, there are constituents that do not like November. Uh, there are constituents that, that like May, and there's constituents that don't like May. Uh, there are some other constituents that like to see, uh, uh, you know, not a three-year term, but a four-year term. If economics is an issue, uh, continuity is an issue, these are things that we need to discuss and possibly come to some type of, uh, conclusion, and whether it's in the best interest of the district or not. And that's, uh, that, that would be a beginning to have it in that pr- proper, uh, forum. I'd appreciate if, uh, the chair could, could follow suit.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, any other comments? Mr. Mr. Colunga?
Uh, on the, uh, the language, uh, Mr. Lehman, uh, term limits, uh, is, is that, uh, referring to the, the length of the term? Or, uh, would you refer to, uh, term limits as in, uh?
Number of terms.
Certain number of terms, uh, at the limit in office, or?
I'm an attorney, but I won't reference that to Mr. Uh-
Mr. Salania?
I, I believe that, uh, what Mr. Lehman is referring to, uh, out of the election code has, I mean, I'm sorry, out of the education code, has to do with the length of the term. Uh, the, the section Mr. Lehman is referring gives the option of a three or a four-year term.
Yeah, I don't think we, we're preoccupied with the number of terms, which I think is what you, you may have interpreted as. Yeah, I don't think we- we're preoccupied with the number of terms, which I think is what you- you may have interpreted as. If, uh, no more comments or questions, then we want to be, standing board agenda items, number five, board calendars, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scobelo, members of the board. Just a few things that I- that I have on the board calendar to bring up today. Of course, we have this- this week is like public school week. Uh, yesterday, we had open house for the, uh, high schools. This evening, we're having open house for the elementaries. And on Thursday, we have open house for the middle schools. If we can make at least the- the Thursday one, it'd be good. Uh, do have a program administrators meeting tomorrow at nine thirty. And it's not going to be at the boardroom like it was published on your calendar, it's going to be at, uh, Ben Bright. I moved it to Ben Bright. Uh, and- and I want to tell you why. I don't know if you noticed that we finally are starting on this building and we're blocking off some of the parking, so a lot of stuff that's scheduled in the boardroom has been moved away because we're going to be doing the roof and we're going to be doing all the exterior windows. The new, it'll take a new look. We're replacing all the windows, as you well know, a lot of water comes in, so we're taking care of that. So while we're doing that, it's going to take maybe four to six months somewhere in there, depending on what it is. We're moving most of our meetings away from this building for parking area.
This building leaks, well?
Doesn't leak from the- from the ceiling, it leaks through the side.
Who was the architect, sir?
I'm not going to go into that. I'm not going to go into that. Uh, but anyway, we're- we're- we're moving, we're moving on. Uh, on, uh, on the ninth, we have, uh, sing out of, uh, Brownsville Sixth Grade Choirs Lopez High School at seven P M. It's- it'd be a nice concert for the sixth graders. Uh, then we have the big thing, uh, we ha- we don't have, uh, classes, we have spring break, uh, from the, on the twelfth through the sixteenth. And, uh, so students will be at home, uh, parents, if you're listening, they- they actually do have spring break, uh, they will be at home. Uh, they will not have, we will not have classes. On the nineteenth, uh, just an announcement that, uh, Mr. Lehman, uh, Dr. Scobelo, and Mr. Cortez will be joining me on the legislative issues in Austin. We'll all be there. We'll come back on Tuesday, uh, hopefully by lunchtime and be ready for the board meeting on the twentieth. Uh, the principal's meeting that we usually have on the, um, um, once a month will also be moved from- from here to the cab. We'll be having it at the world, at the central, uh, administrative building by Sam Stadium. Uh, very important one, I circled it, I hope you circle in your calendar. We have a dedication of Ben Bright Elementary and that's on March the twenty-fourth. Please put it on your calendar. We hope to all be there. Very, be very exciting to dedicate that school. I know the daughter of Mr. Bright will be here along with her family and it's going to be a pretty exciting ceremony out there. Uh, also, on the thirty-first of March, at the Sam Stadium, we're going to have the local Special Olympics track meet. It's always a very exciting time of the year for the students to participate so we can make it out there. We truly appreciate it. And in April, uh, just announcement, not only for- for you board members, for the general public, on Monday, April second, is the first day, time, the first day that we have for students to have to apply for inter-district transfers. And that will be at the cab, at the old Central Middle School over there by Sam Stadium. Uh, so those of you that are interested, those of you audience that are interested in looking for inter-district transfers, it used to be over here by, in front of Hannah, but it has been moved to the- to the old Central Middle School, uh, over there by Sam Stadium. That's very important. And we also have tox testing for fifth grade math, uh, on, uh, on- on Monday and Tuesday of, uh, of April. So with that in mind, and then, of course, we'll- we'll pick up the board meetings on, uh, on the third and at that time. Yes?
I noticed that overnight of, uh, you have the sixth grade choirs.
Yes.
At Lopez High School.
That's correct.
It's exciting for young people to go out there and, uh, for those who have not gone to listen or to the choir or the band, you should try it. It's fantastic sounds that they have on, so they find our people in the choir, direct all these. But perhaps this is not the, uh, what I want to know, would a- a resource class keep a student from participating in choir, on this choir?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Uh, then I would like to talk to you after, later on this week.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, Mr. Powers?
Uh, thank you, President Scobelo. I- I'd like to call, if we can, in March, an insurance meeting. It'll be on Th- like a Thursday, March twenty-second.
No problems with it.
Okay. Five thirty.
Pat, can you get that on the calendar?
That's on the Thursday. That way, Mr. Colunga can- is available too.
Insurance committee? Also, I don't know if you mentioned it, uh, did you mention an internal audit committee meeting?
It'll happen tomorrow, but this is an internal audit strictly in my office, for- with internal auditors.
If no other comments or questions, then we want to item eight, public audience. The next item on our agenda is a public comment period, and this is time for citizen staff or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other points of meeting. So please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. Okay, there's no public comment, wow. That's one for the dear diary. Okay. Then, yeah, history in the making. Moving on to item, uh... (laugh) Item nine, uh, first time, huh? Uh, the next item, item nine, closed meetings pursuant to Texas government code section five-five-one point zero-seven-four and point zero-eight-two. Board now goes to closed session. On to item nine, board action level three, grievance, uh, for Max Juarez, number zero-one-one dash zero-six slash zero-seven. Do I have a motion? Well, uh, item dies for lack of motion. Uh, moving on to item ten, consent agenda, general function, A. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating there is no need for discussion or deliberation on the following agenda items. Under A, number ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Under B, payments sixteen. Under C, budget amendments, uh, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Under D, contracts and agreements, twenty-three, twenty-four. Under E, bids, proposals, purchases, twenty-five and twenty-seven. Um, under, uh, item, under closed meetings, personal matters, uh, none of them will be discussed, they are all under, uh, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Powers, second by Mr. Aguilar, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, discussion consideration, possible action on adoption resolution number zero-one-six dash zero-six slash zero-seven, granting certain tax exemptions to certain historic sites under two thousand and seven heritage plan. I will now op- I will now open the floor for discussion. Mr. Aguilar?
Powers, not historically known this, it's going to be going on forever. Are we going to let Mr. Powers discuss this item for us?
Powers? I really don't need to discuss it because I'm in favor of it, so I'd rather go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution number zero-one-six zero-six slash zero-seven, granting certain tax exemptions to- to certain historical sites under the two thousand and seven heritage plan.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Powers, second by Mr. Aguilar, on favor, raise your right hand. I'll- I'll oppose. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on... To number twenty-six, recommend awarding RFQ number zero-seven dash zero-eight-three to select an architectural firm to provide architectural design services to the new high school number six and to authorize the administration to negotiate a fee for said services. Mr. Gonzalez?
Fourteen, uh, fourteen, uh, yeah? Yeah, four- fourteen was consented.
Yes, on the item twenty-six, uh, thank you, Dr. Scobelo, members of the board. Uh, I know that, uh, we've worked well with the bond oversight committee and I truly respect their opinion and all the hard work they've done. And, um, there's a lot of consensus building, uh, we went through all the procedures. And the purpose of this was to provide this- this bond oversight committee was to ensure that all processes were taking place and that, uh, the expenditure of bond funds were done in the right way. And that, uh, that the public was- was represented well, not only by the board, but by the bond oversight committee, to ensure that that was, that that issue was- was addressed properly. I appreciate all the hard work they do, I appreciate everything they've done and will continue to do. There's nothing question about their- their hard work and their diligence and their commitment. We have worked very hard together. We came from all the RFQs, administration ranked the top five, they heard the presentations from the top five firms. We came to a consensus of the top two. There's not even a debate there. Nobody can debate the top two firms. Comes, however, it comes, uh, a- a time that, uh, they may directly, but administration has also a duty and an obligation to make a recommendation to the district as to how administration feels and what administration has determined objectively through the processes that we have in place, including the policy that we have in place that says we must adhere to an RFQ and weigh the RFQs. When we came down to it, the board also ranked and during the presentation, they ranked, uh, PBK was ranked number one by the board, by administration. But we went to see all the three schools of the top three, which were in consensus once again with the bond oversight committee. They were the same three. There was no debate there. And we went through and we saw the schools and we looked at everything that was turned in and we, and I provided you with a side-by-side concerning the RFQ. I even- I even provided the board with what were the questions that were asked for recommendations. When we put the side-by-side together, according to the RFQ, the points were given out. One firm received more points than the other. During the- the presentations, uh, there was a difference of opinion between the bond oversight and ourselves. We accepted that. We moved on. We- we looked at all the schools. At this time, administration sees no reason why we cannot recommend the firm that we feel is the- is the firm that can best do the job of the district. They will, hell, that can best put the- the effort to- to meet our needs and the district needs. So at this time, I'm recommending PBK Architects to be the firm to be selected under this RFQ, uh, oh-seven dash- dash oh-eighty-three for the design of the high school number six. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions from the board? Okay, we have a recommendation, do I have a motion to approve recommendation by administration? Motion by Mr. Lehman, do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor, raise your right hand. I'll oppose. Motion fails. So, Mr. Gonzalez, I guess back to the drawing board or...
Back to the drawing board. There's no other recommendations being for- put forth tonight.
Moving on to item eleven, closed meetings pursuant to Texas government code section five-five-one point zero-seven-one. Board now goes to closed session.